Welcome to the Northwest Local School Board Meeting. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chris, can you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
This is Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Tietzort.
Here.
Mrs. Detsel. Mr. Yoshimura.
Here. Great. Matt, are there any legislative updates?
The only thing I have on that front is they're expected to return to session after the election. Lame duck session, but they're supposed to look at school funding if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Todd, do you have anything else?
Yeah, that is correct. And then down lower, we have a adoption. Where is it? Of a resolution to get the legislators to get rid of Ed Choice. I'll go over that when we get down to it. But like he said, they are out until the election is over, which gives a very tiny window to make any changes.
You know, Todd, I was at my Butler Tech meeting last week and we were all talking. And the word is that Ed Choice is not going away. It's here to stay. And I just think that's something that the public schools need to get together and, you know, talk about and see what they can do to alleviate that amount of money coming out of our budget.
Yeah, Bassa and Asbo, your organization and mine are forming committees to again attack it. The problem that we're running into is we have Mr. Blessing on board and Bill Sykes and the push is there. However, getting them in session for such a very short time because they'll basically come back mid-January and then decisions have to be made by the beginning of February. So it's a short window. We have to make things. So further down the agenda, I have a resolution that shows that we are united with other school districts and school boards across the state to remove Ed Choice as even though they froze it and moved it from last year to this year and said there would be no increase. There was because they grandfathered siblings into it. So as we get to it, I'll go over it. But yes, there's still a big push to do as much as we can to remove it, save our funding.
Right. Butler Tech updates, Jim?
Yeah, just wanted to make sure everybody got their boxes for the student showcase that you guys can start watching the videos now. And then you'll see that there's a scorecard in there to score our kids and in that. So just, we just got to make sure that it gets mailed back to them by, I think it's November the 6th. It's got to be postmarked. When we were trying to get everybody from our district, you know, that got one sent to them to do that and get everybody involved. So it's, it's, it's a pretty cool process how they do that and seeing how our kids are doing up at Butler Tech in these showcases. That's all I got.
Jim?
Yes.
I took a look at some of the presentations. They are fantastic.
They, I tell you what, Joe, they do a fan, I'm not just saying our kids, but all of the kids throughout the Butler Tech organization. They do a great job.
Oh, absolutely.
With those showcases and the stuff that they can do.
Excellent job that they did.
Yep.
Okay. Reports from any employee organizations, Todd?
I have received none.
Okay. And how about community comments?
We did not receive any.
And then that moves us to 11.1, which is the adoption of the superintendent's consent items.
Okay, we have a couple of consent items. I'd like to go over personnel items are just are this time of the year. Acceptance of coaching positions, extracurricular positions and resignations. General business is a resolution authorizing the sale of real estate property, the Welch property. This has been a very lengthy process. We had to work closely with the Pleasant Run Farm Community Association and also with Springfield Township. Nothing has changed. This is just verification that the selling price will stay the same. The one change that has changed is it will now be purchased by JA Development and they will meet the same requirements, specs and expectations that we have said from the beginning. They will have met with TJ Ackerman, who has met with the Pleasant Run Farm Association. They are following all the guidelines in order to put the homes in this area. All the lots have remained the same. All the measurements and what will go in for that community will stay the same. Under vendor contracts, this is like we have on a weekly basis. There is nothing that was not budgeted for. Anything in green is federal or non-public grant monies. So everything was budgeted for that is listed there. Each year, we have to have a resolution to declare students in practical transport. And this is where students attending non-public schools are entitled to receive state average payment in lieu of transportation. And this has been very difficult this year. You would think it would be easier in lieu of in our district having and parochial schools having a choice of in-person and remote learning. But you still have to make decisions on how many buses we have. Does it make sense to travel a certain amount of distance? Or is it more affordable for the school district to pay, make a payment in lieu of transportation? So this, this process is required by law. And it is something that we have to do each year to make adjustments. So for the adoption of the superintendent's consent items, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent's consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
First question, is the the resolution, the resolution is part of the consent items, right?
For the sale of the property?
Sorry, to the support Senate Bill 58.
No, that's not part of the consent item.
That's not. Okay, I want to be clear what I'm, okay. Because that's.
That's, that's down below. That's next, under miscellaneous.
Okay. I asked that because the personnel items are on A and then the other three are on B, general business.
Oh, no, it is part of it. I, I am mistaken and I will correct myself. I believe I did not go down far enough. Yeah, so miscellaneous is 11.6, resolution to support Senate Bill 58. I did not scroll down far enough for some reason. So what we are encouraging here is Senate Bill 58 was introduced in August to extend many important provisions of House Bill 197. So it can be get very, it can get very confusing if you try to tie together the House bills, 197, 164, and try to figure out what's going on. But with Senate Bill 358, it will support our state educators as they meet the diverse needs of students during the most challenging time there is. And what this approaches is Ed Choice vouchers. So as we went through this process last year, what is being, what is happening is there is a push in Upper Ohio by a senator to make sure that parochial parents get vouchers if their kids attend parochial schools.
What's that senator's name, Todd?
I'm drawing a blank. I knew somebody was going to.
Did Huffman?
Huffman, yes. And so it is in Lima Catholic and he is elected from that area. And he wanted, he was elected on the basis that he would provide vouchers. Now, it also goes along with some of the parties, Republican Party and federal laws of what they would like to see happen. But what it does is it takes money that was voted on by taxpayers to put toward public education. When people pass levies for the past 15 to 20 to 30 years, nobody voted money so that their tax dollars could be taken from public entities and given to parochial schools or private institutions. So we fought this last year, made a good stance. We had several people in our district go up and address Senate members, specifically Huffman, as he sat there and rolled his eyes and didn't really pay attention to what we were doing. We've had great backing from Bill Blessing and Bill Sykes. And we came to an agreement last year, but some things changed. The pandemic hit. And instead of making a decision, they kind of let the pandemic overtake everything. And they just decided to keep everything the same and move it to next year. But when they kept everything the same, it did not stay the same. They grandfathered siblings. So if somebody qualified for Ed Choice, if their sibling wanted to get an Ed Choice scholarship and they weren't in the school that was awarded Ed Choice, they qualified for it also. So it did affect a lot of money in the state. It is still going to hit a lot of school districts in a large way. I don't have exact numbers, but I know last year we were looking at 18. I know Brenda Miller is on this call. I believe we're at 38 or 39. Brenda, do you have the exact number on how many accepted Ed Choice this year?
And we're actually at 53.
53. So we're at 53 total requesting Ed Choice. And so if we don't get this removed, it is going to continue to cost our district money. Our enrollment has sustained and stayed at a good rate. But if you look at future predictions, our enrollment will go down because of the age of our community and just lack of children in households. So what this is, is a resolution to join the other Board of Educations across the state to support Senate Bill 58, which will encourage the 133rd General Assembly to expedite the passage with changes that take away Ed Choice. The problem is going to be with this is we will all fight this again, but this is going to be a big piece of do they have enough time to make a decision? Because with the election, they are using that as a buffer to stay out of office. They might come back a little bit for some work sessions in December. But usually they come back about the 10th or 11th of January. And then by February 1, they need to have a decision made. So I'm asking that the board pass this and support of other school boards and other, and the children of public schools all across the state for the General Assembly to make the right decision and get rid of Ed Choice. So that is the miscellaneous piece.
Todd, had, had John Graff had brought this up on our Butler Tech for me, had he talked to all the superintendents at the superintendent's meeting about this? And what the choices that we had to do or what we could do?
And who talked to us?
John Graff from Butler Tech.
No, most of the conversations I have are with Bassa officials and Ohio School Board Association official, officials. Because that's who has the main connections to our legislators.
Yeah, because I mean, we, I mean, he was adamant about because he's talked to these senators and that, and that this thing is a done deal and this is going to go through.
We're not hearing that as much, but there's not a whole, the reason they probably think it's a done deal is there's just not enough time for them to meet and there to be a rally to fight it. The only way to do it now, you can't go in person like we did last time because we were going up to Columbus. We were presenting in person and now besides a virtual rally, there's no way to really get in front of it. So we have the support of our local legislators and Blessing and Sykes, but it's not getting us where we need to be. So.
I mean, I mean, those two guys, they're not going to be able to stop this if you got the rest of the senators and representatives in the state. They're going to push this through.
I think a lot of it depends on the election and I, whether it's Republican or Democrat, because that's a lot of what's pushing us through at the top. In Ohio, anyway. And with Huffman being the Speaker of the House now, that did change a lot, but there is still a lot of people.
Cup. Isn't Bob Cup the Speaker?
Well, yeah, Bob Cup's the Speaker of the House, but I'm sorry Huffman is the head of the Senate.
Yeah. Okay.
Amy, how much is that costing us, those 53?
It tripled from last year. Last year we were about 75,000. Now it's almost 225,000 in one year and it's just going to keep compounding. So every year you add another grade level. If a student moves in from a school and already had it, they keep it. Their frozen language wasn't really frozen.
And we, we don't have any repercussion with that if they, they did say it was frozen and clearly it's not.
Nope. They said that's the way they interpreted the frozen language was it's frozen. If you had it, you keep it. And siblings of those who already qualified for it keep it to, or get it to.
And they're doing this on top of having no way for a school to get out of Ed Choice because there is no state report card.
Right.
And this is part of the 1.7 million we lose in scholarships every year. They're just growing. This is just one of the type of scholarships we lose.
Right.
We meet every Friday. Barb, who is our liaison to the legislators in Columbus, gives an update. We continue to meet monthly and try to put things in place to attack this. But until we can get them back in session, that's when the biggest push will be. We have Kevin Miller from Bassa, Barb from the Hamilton County ESC and several others from Columbus Public and Cleveland who are taking the biggest hits. I think they were at last point. Cleveland was spending more on Ed Choice than they were taking in of funding from the state. So that's how bad it's gotten up north.
And what, what, what do they think that they can do? I mean, I was told that this is going to be a done deal, no matter what happens.
Well, I don't think anybody can say it's a done deal until you see who's, what's going to happen next week. At that time, there could be changes. There could be pushes. If it is still DeVos in charge, we know what her push is. We know what she wants with Ed Choice for all. But we've, we've got to get them back in and we've got to get in front of them. And in the middle of a pandemic, I think that's why people think it's a done deal. But we're not hearing it's a done deal in my meetings on Friday that we're having weekly and from Barbara talking to Bassa and your guys' organization, Asbo.
Todd, does Dewine have any input or has made any comments about the St. Choice stuff?
Nah, not really. He'll basically go along with what, he's got so much on his plate with the pandemic. He's, he's not going to go there.
That's a shame. It wouldn't be so bad if they kept it, if they funded it at the state level.
Well, there was talk of that about three weeks ago, that there was a shift that the state would take it over and would fund it. So that is what I've been told is not off the table yet, that this, it would happen, but the state would take over the funding. So it all depends on what comes with the latest funding, but.
What can, what can Blessing and Sykes do about that?
Um, they can fight. They could get on committees. Sykes has got a lot of power up there. He can push the other members to see the inequity of what it's doing. They are both public school proponents. They've always supported us when we've asked them to. Know the same that every other legislator can do, those who represent Warren, Butler, Hamilton.
Realistically, if they would come back and say the state's going to fund it, the state too, revenues are down. So if they do that, I mean, not to be negative, but won't they just take it away from us somewhere else?
Amy, I mean, you can speak to this, but history goes back to 2008 where we never recoup that. They were always told us they'd get us back up to spending the same and we never did get back to spending the same at the level we were there. So I don't see how they will here either in the middle of a pandemic. But right now we are ahead of what their calculations were, as Amy said. But how long will that continue when we go into winter and we're seeing a spike in cases? Hopefully it can continue.
You, you would just hope, if nothing else, you would just hope that because of the pandemic, they wouldn't do anything right now. I mean, I, I hope they don't go on recess and come back and that's the first thing on their agenda and then they vote.
It will be.
Because then what, what, it kind of takes it out of the public school's hands to, to, to fight it and everything. I mean, you would just, you would just hope they would at least put it on the shelf until there's time for the public schools to pitch their, their reasons why it's not a good idea. But I don't know. I guess time will tell.
Yeah. And I, like I said, I have not heard that anything is a done deal. I've talked to Kevin Miller probably twice in the last three weeks. We talked to Barbara Weekly. We don't think the outlook is good, but nothing is a done deal because they're not together. So it's just getting them back together and you have no chance of getting them to do anything prior to the election. So it's can small committees and that's where Bill Sykes can get committees together and do some work behind the scenes up there. And hopefully we can see what can happen, but this is one step that will help us.
Todd, the Senate Bill or House Bill 305, which is the funding formula, part of the new funding formula that they're trying to pass is that scholarships and community schools are funded by the state and not through local taxes. So if that could be part of this big picture. And then as far as our funding, we are still at, they flatlined 2019 revenue for 20 and 21. And then they reduced each year by 1.8 million. And they're talking about going into the next biennial budget, either currently, which is a reduced 2019 level or at 90%. So we're looking at flat or reduced revenues going forward, even though the state's revenues are exceeding their estimates. But we, one hopeful thing I have think is that the state by accepting the federal monies, they had to guarantee that they would not fund us less than 2019. So I'm hopeful that we won't see further reduction based on that, but we'll probably stay flat for another two years. So a total of at least four years.
But the state funding these scholarships, that would, I mean, that would help a lot.
We've got almost $4 million for our district in total between community schools, scholarships.
Okay. We keep, should we keep the same motions?
I can read it again if you'd like. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent's consent item as listed.
So moved.
Second.
And I have one more question I'm curious about. On the resolution to declare students in practical transport, what is that state average payment? It's not a big windfall as I recall, but.
Chris McKee, do you have that amount?
Yes, it's $125.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're sent to vote. Superintendent consent items passed five to zero. And now we move into the adoption of the fiscal consent items. Amy?
So first slide, for our fiscal consent items, we have the minutes from our special meeting on October the 5th. We also have our September financial report. Our all funds balance was $60 million and our general fund unreserved balance is down to 26.5 million. For our revenues, we're at 34 million or at 37% for the year. But remember we've gotten our second half taxes and our expenditures are at 23 million or at 24%. So we're three months, a year, right around 25%. So we're right on target. Weighted average return is 1.09, up a little bit from last month, but still down over a year ago. And the Fed's talking of interest rates staying at nothing for another couple of years. So we're not, we're looking at our investment in revenue to slowly go down over the next couple of years. And our monthly bills were our routine monthly bills as well as we had a refund to Hamilton County. They sent a large check to the wrong district and because it comes ACH, we have to process and send that back. We have our textbooks. We have an attendance visitor system that we purchased, some bus warranties, summer pavement on the playground ceiling, staff and student software that we're still renewing, workbooks, some pandemic supplies and our auxiliary and grant fund payments for our non-public schools. I also asked that we accept the fiscal year 21 amended certificate of estimated resources, about $185 million. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
I moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Amy? All right, we go to vote. Fiscal consent items passed five to zero.
Now I have a resolu, I have two annual resolutions. Next one is the resolution authorizing the advance of tax monies from Hamilton County. This is for the collection that starts in January of the calendar year 2020. And so we have to ask that they provide us our advances, the monies that they collect in advance of the final settlement and go ahead and send that to us on a weekly basis versus holding it all to the end, which is mid-February, sometimes into March. So we have to pass the resolution so that I can ask the weekly that they send us the money that they've collected to date. With that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the resolution authorizing the advance of tax monies from Hamilton County auditor as listed.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any questions for Amy about that? That motion passes five to zero.
Finally, I have a resolution to authorize to file a modified tax budget for fiscal year 22. We file our tax budget with the county in January, even though our fiscal year is July to June. As the county and the Ohio Vice Code requires all governmental entities to file a budget January and most municipalities and counties are all on a counter year basis. We have revised the revised code to allow us to file a modified tax budget, which mainly puts our funds that we collect taxes in only. So general fund, our debt service fund and our permanent improvement fund is what they're mainly looking at. So they know how much to assess in taxes, what rate to, what tax rate to assess to make sure they can collect enough to make our debt payments. With that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the resolution authorizing us to file a modified tax budget for 22 as listed.
I'm moved.
Second. Sorry.
Motion in a second. Any questions for Amy? And that resolution passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. And we move into 15.1, the new graduation policy.
Yes, this is curriculum and instruction is the new graduation policy, locally defined diploma seals. At this time, I'm going to ask Leslie Silbernagle to go over the Ohio law enacted new long-term graduation requirements for the class of 2023 and beyond. And these requirements are also available as an additional option for students in classes of 2021 and 2022. Leslie, go ahead and share your screen and begin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. Are you able to see the document now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So there is attached to your board docs, you have the formal language. This is a little bit more user-friendly, student-friendly, family-friendly version of the seals. So as part of the new graduation pathway put forth by the Ohio Department of Education, students will have to earn at least two seals to demonstrate their college career or military readiness. Each seal allows our students to demonstrate knowledge and skills essential for their future success in their post-high school paths. This will be, as Mr. Bowling said, required with students starting in the class of 2023. But our current seniors and juniors do have this to be option to use this new graduation pathway if they so choose, which is why we're bringing this to the board now. So we are recommending that we at Northwest Local School District offer all three of the possible locally defined seals. There are nine state-defined seals, but we can offer up to three locally defined seals as well. And so those are the community service seal, the fine and performing arts seal and the student engagement seal. So you can see those here. So details of these can be seen on this document. So details of these can be seen on this document. For the community service seal, basically, our students would earn a seal for the volunteer work that they do in the community. And there are details, they would need to get a minimum of twenty hours, they would write a proposal. And basically give some type of presentation, written, oral, even create a video after their volunteer service was done. The fine arts and performing arts seal would allow our students to earn a seal for activities that they do. Either fine arts courses that they take or fine arts extracurricular activities such as the school play or musical. And so in terms of credits, they would need to take two credit hours of visual or performing arts. Or participate in two seasons of extracurricular activities like the musical. And then for this student engagement seals, our students would earn a seal for participating in school sanctioned extracurricular activities such as athletics. School-sponsored clubs or student government. Once these seals are approved, the curriculum department will work with our high school administrators and guidance counselors to communicate this information. To our high school students and families. So those are the three locally-defined seals. Are there any questions I can answer?
All right, thanks, Leslie. This is for information. We will bring it back to the November board meeting for action.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. And that moves us up to Neo board policy revisions.
Yes, attached are current policy revisions. There are thirteen. Please look them over. If you have any questions, let us know and we will get you to the department. Most of them are through HR and look them over and at the next board meeting, we will bring them back for action.
And that moves us into superintendent update.
Okay, um, quite a, quite a lot to talk about here, but not too much, but just wanted to talk about some changes we expect this week. We know going into this week that unless there's some major changes in Hamilton County, we will move to purple at the end of this week. Just to remind everyone, there are indicators that are part of the Ohio Public Health Alert System. One indicator is new cases per capita. It's got to be below fifty. Last week we were at one seventeen. Last Friday, we were at one sixty-seven. Indicator two is the new cases increase. Indicator three is non-congregate cases. Indicator four is emergency department visits. Indicator five is outpatient visits. Indicator six is hospital admissions and indicator seven is ICU bed occupancy. Those are the seven indicators that could affect us moving to purple at the end of the week. So what does that mean for our schools and communities in Northwest Local School District? Well, we know from the data collected that Northwest schools are very safe place to work and to go to school. However, though, we cannot control outside factors like wearing masks outside of school, attending parties, weddings, funerals, and other general gatherings. Folks have things they do. We do know that when masks are not worn, just like the governor has said, and social distancing isn't, is not followed outside of school. That that can lead to issues coming back into school that jeopardizes our safety protocols. So I want to be very careful in saying school is a safe place, but it's safe because of the protocols we have in place. But things that happen on the outside can affect that. As of today, we have had twenty-nine staff cases as a result of COVID tests and twenty-seven students who have tested positive. Our numbers for this week. Quarantine of staff, we have had a total of thirty-seven quarantines this week, twenty-five non-school-related. And eighty-nine total quarantines for students, twenty-eight non-school-related. For students, it's kind of been the opposite, thirty-six quarantine for school-related and twenty-one for non-school-related. So it just shows that people have lives outside of school and. This isn't saying staff is bad or students are bad or students are good and the staff is good. Staff go home and have children, their children go to school, they are in contact with those and some schools aren't cohorting like we are. So kids are catching COVID at higher rates and being quarantined at higher rates. The one thing that is very true is we are seeing spikes in cases due to community spread. It used to be there was retirement centers and other places. It is now community spread. This is starting to trickle into some of our schools. Our parents work, they have jobs that expose some more than others. We're also starting to get closer on a weekly basis to closing a school down. I don't mean to shock anyone, but it's just the fact of where we are. And I'm talking about shutting a school down, possibly not the district, but a school due to lack of staffing. And that's what I've said the last couple of times we've talked about this. Is if we're going to close, it'll be for a lack of staff because you have to have staff to run a building. This doesn't mean that our staff are coming down with COVID. However, some are being quarantined due to being in close contact of someone who did test positive. And we cannot run a school without enough staff for supervision. That's the bottom line. It's very difficult to get subs. Nobody wants to work during a pandemic. And our staff are not getting many of their plan bells because they're internal subbing for those who are out. I cannot say enough about our staff and I cannot applaud them enough. They're going above and beyond every day. And our building administrator for just making sure their buildings are open and running. It's just amazing what our folks are doing. This leads us to why we went to the cohort model. Once a staff member is quarantined, we have no sub coverage, basically. We do have some building subs, but they get used quickly. We move folks internally and we make it happen, so attempting to change our process leads to more issues. But I applaud our staff and our principals. It's just, it's very difficult and they're doing a great job. We're also, I wanted everyone to know, hopefully you received our survey to staff, parents and students. The survey is a way to collect data and how each group feels things are going after one quarter. We will examine the data and see what the opinions are of our employees, our students and our parents and look to see what changes can be made, if any. All decisions will continue to keep the safety of students and staff in mind as that is always our number one priority. We are also looking for input and how students are doing with learning in the remote setting and then in-person setting. I will bring the information and the collection of data from the, the surveys back to the November, November Board of Ed meeting. And try to give some direction on what we can do, if anything, and I don't know in January at the end of the semester. But we will look at the data and try to make moves based on what the data shows. And that also includes our COVID data. I would also like to address some possible scenarios as we move forward. Depending on staff at each building, there could be some buildings, as I said earlier, that could close across the district. As I said, we cannot sustain staying open at any of our schools without proper staffing. We are also looking out for our employees, their role will be during in-person and remote. Unless we have an extended closing, and I mean six weeks or more, we will use all of our staff to reach out to our students to help improve our instructional models. So there might be some shortened closings, so if one school closes. It would be based on reopening. When can we get enough staff back to reopen? Is that two days? Is that four days? Is that six days? Is that eight? We don't know that answer. It just depends on how long they're quarantined and, and when folks can return. But unless we're extended closing, six weeks or more, we're going to use all our staff. They are going to work. They might be using, be busy on the phone, emailing, making sure that our students are staying busy. And that even if they're at home, we're doing our best to keep them busy. The other thing is holidays and following safety protocols will be very important to our staying opening. Holidays are great, but they also provide an opportunity for COVID to spread to folks. Because we'll naturally let up on our safety protocols. So we just got to be careful there. When we have to close due to shortage of staff, we will try to give as much notice as possible to parents. Of the school that is having staffing issues. However, it might look just like a snow day cancellation, where it could be the night before or the morning of. Or any of, any of our safety closing reasons, we will give parents as much notice as possible. So every night we wait to see maybe a test, three test results come back in one building. And, and we know that we're down three staff now, and then by the time they do the tracing, it might be three additional staff. So we just don't know those things till we test, but we will try to give our parents as much notice as possible. Because we do understand you have to work and daycare and the safety of our kids during the day, if they have to stay at home is important. But we won't cancel just to cancel it. It will be for safety issues. And if we have staff, we're staying open and sometimes right now, we're down to running buildings with as little staff as we can right now already. So as we move inside for the winter, things can change and I just want folks to be aware of that. So again, I applaud our staff for switching, being flexible, making sure we can have school because we truly understand the importance that parents need to be at work. More important, we understand the importance of those kids who want to be in-person learning being there. Another real case scenario we're starting to see is transportation. We only have so many drivers and as you know, bus drivers are, have the closest proximity to students. With student to student and student to driver. Our drivers do an outstanding job of maintaining safety protocols, but we still have positive cases and quarantines that occur naturally during the pandemic. So I applaud our transportation department. Going above and beyond and, and we'll just keep an eye on them. They're running late routes, they're getting kids to school and they're doing a great job. So we'll keep an eye on that and, and right now we're able to go and, and we'll continue to monitor that. So I applaud them for the hard work they're, that they're doing. But they're just like everybody else in our district. I can't tell you, I mean, food service since this pandemic started and all our employees, it's just. You guys are unreal, so appreciate everyone. Unfortunately, disease continues to spread, but as a district community, we have learned how to live with the changes that are necessary to slow the spread. The mask, the hand washing, the six feet spacing, even with the mask on and good hygiene. It's truly a community effort, though, is what we're finding out and it'll take everybody in the community to help make sure our students can stay in school. That is a warning. Purple is more of a warning and that's where our health commissioner put it. It's not a reason to have to close school, but it is a warning system for every aspect of the community. And even though we might be doing okay in school, kids and staff have to go home. They, our staff have to be parents, they have to go to groceries, they have to be out in public. And if folks aren't wearing the mask or following the guidelines, different things can affect us. So we will continue to monitor this data every day. We'll always put safety of our students and staff first and we'll continue to do everything we can. To make sure we can keep school open, but I, I don't want there to be a panic about purple. I, I think we're built for this and I don't mean that in a bad way, but cohorting was designed for this. And when you limit the contacts of students and staff, that helps our staff tremendously. Cause it's not, we, we can teach school if we have a large amount of students absent. We can have school if we have a large amount of staff absent. So that becomes some of the problems that we run into. So I again cannot say enough about the pride that our staff is showing, the hard work, the dedication. And just being great, great role models for our kids. So I will take any questions any of you have received about what's going on with purple. But I think it's something we have to talk about because I, I am hearing from our meetings on Friday with the Hamilton County Health Commissioner. That he's pretty sure on Friday, unless something spectacular happens, we're going to move to purple. But our, our determination is to stay open and see how we go from there.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I kind of have something to add, just my personal watching Dwyane's press conferences. It still seems like, there's people that say that, you know, purple, school's going to be closed, school's going to be shut down. But it's my opinion, it doesn't seem like it's going to come from the governor. As you know, he's, he's still pretty adamant about leaving it in local control. So for a statewide school shutdown, seems like, you know, that'd be a last resort.
Yeah, Matt, I, I appreciate that comment because I can back that up with, not only is Governor Dwyane saying that. But Greg Kesterman and all the health commissioners in Butler County, Warren County are saying the same thing. It'll be a local decision and I think that's the way it should be. But I just don't want people to be shocked when we do have to. Like I said, I don't see us closing the district. I see us closing a school at a time because of lack of staffing. But if we get to a point where safety concerns cause us to close because there is a peak, we are watching the zip codes. And if we do need to close the district because that's what's best for our kids and our staff, then that's what we'll do. Really worried over the holidays, so we're looking at those closely.
I, I think to Matt's point, as far as, you know, the governor going to leave it up to each individual school district. They almost have to because every school district's doing it different. I mean, you know, we have some school districts that's completely remote. We have some that are, you know, going two days and everybody's off a day and going two days and so on and so forth. So it, that purple's going to affect every district differently depending on how and what they're doing. So hopefully it won't be purple, but. I think this district is doing a very good job when you think that about we're the second largest school district in Hamilton County. I don't think our numbers reflect, I mean, yes, there's some, but it's not huge numbers compared to how many students and staff we have. So I, I just kind of want to echo what Todd's saying. I mean, this is, our staff's doing a phenomenal job, our custodial staff's doing a phenomenal job, our transportation, our cafeteria. Everybody's working together and, and is it the ideal situation every day? Probably, you know, no, everybody wants things to be back to normal, but. It's certainly, we're not quarantining three and four hundred kids every single day like some school districts are. So great job and everybody just keep those masks on whether you like them or not.
Todd, the, the staff that's having the quarantine, is it just across the board or is it more middle school, elementary, high school, or is it just across the board?
It's across the board. There is no rhyme or reason. It's, it's bad luck in some situations. It's just. There is no rhyme or reason. I can't even think of some correlations. It's just, it's just everywhere. And, and, and when you look at the quarantines, a lot of it is because of what's happening outside.
Outside of the district, we can't control.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to send a false message that schools are, oh, it's a safe place. Because at any time, somebody could catch COVID or contract because kids are so asymptomatic, you just don't know. But because we follow our safety protocols, we have a controlled environment. Outside of school is not so controlled. I mean, I'm going around more and more, even in our own school district, just to run out to get gas or do certain things. And I stand there in amazement as people just walk in places without a mask and act like it's nothing. And it, it, you know, you, you can't do anything about it, but you just ask out of general respect, think about others before you think about yourself. That's the biggest.
Todd, some of the only feedback that I've received, well, first of all, you know, I, I, I'm gonna reflect what everybody else has been saying. I, I think we've done a phenomenal job preparing our school district for this situation since the beginning of the school year. The, the thing that I, I've heard and, and you're aware of this, Todd, I've shared it with you, but I'll share it in the board meeting. Is, you know, it's impossible to cater to all subsets of kids. You know, is it, is some of the situations ideal for educational environment? No, not at all, but our, like you said, our first and foremost priority is safety. You know, there's varying degrees of opinion out there. There are some people who feel. That you shouldn't even wear a mask, that, you know, I don't know if it's the herd, herd immunity mentality or whatever it is. But I, I, I think first and foremost, the parents of our school district need to realize that our first concern is, is the safety of, of everyone. Our staff, our students. You know, my daughter was subject to a quarantine two weeks ago and it is what it is. It's not ideal. Thank goodness she didn't come down with it, but you, you follow the, the protocols and the guidelines. And I think we keep running the way we're running, I, I, and some other options that we're looking at. I, I think we're positioning ourselves well, because we're, we're now, we're now crested into the influenza season. And once we layer that on top of this, because symptomatically. The, the symptoms are so similar that we're going to compound probably. Situations where, where quarantining people just until we know whether they have it or not. So it, it is going to be an interesting next couple of months for sure.
I would like to make one correction. Chris McKee texted me, he said earlier, he said in lieu of was one twenty-five, that's for half a year. It's two fifty is what they receive for in lieu of transportation.
Thank you.
He wanted to correct that.
I do want to, I do want to thank the administration for the, the COVID nineteen tracker on the website. So if anybody's not aware, there's a COVID nineteen tracker on the NWLSD.org. That lists staff positive cases, staff quarantine, student positives, and student quarantines by week and per school. That lists staff positive cases, staff quarantine, student positives, and student quarantines by week and per school. And those are updated today, right Todd?
They are, and Lindsay has changed it. So if folks haven't had a chance, please check it out. It's even showing more information and easier to get to. So yes, it is updated weekly. And we're going to try to do it even more on a daily basis.
Can you explain a little bit what triggers? In-school quarantine for in-school case?
Yeah, so many things and we, we've had some curiosity questions and we've also had some social media posts. Some of it are correct and some that are incorrect. So a close contact is defined. You have been around someone who has tested positive for COVID. And so some people think that I was around someone who tested positive, but I had my mask on. And that's, it doesn't matter whether your mask is on or off. If you're within six feet for fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period. You are a close contact. Now, where that becomes confusing to some is. Johnny, who might be sitting in a class, his mom is a nurse and tests positive. So somebody else who might be in that class is next to Johnny, Johnny's a close contact. So he's quarantined for fourteen days. But the other kid is not because he's not the first contact or the close contact. So things like that are confusing. What I can tell you is our district, Kiva Bryce and our team does a great job of contact tracing with Hamilton County. And, and those are not easy jobs. You get the worse of people. Because people are not happy when they're quarantined. People are not excited or willing to tell you they have COVID. We've had incidents where kids have been sent to school and someone has tested positive in the house and they should not have. But it's also a personal thing that we cannot share that information of who tests positive. People, some are embarrassed, some are not. It's just a weird situation in the middle of a pandemic, but a close contact is somebody who's been within six feet of someone. Lives in the house with someone who's tested positive and they have to be quarantined. But because you're friends with this person, doesn't necessarily. Mean that you're quarantined. So it just depends on the contact tracing and where they go with it and what they find out based on time. It's very difficult.
Anything else?
Yeah, Lindsay just said to let everybody know that the tracker is updated like Matt said every Monday. And that the data has been obtained by three thirty PM. So.
That moves us into board member comments. Joe, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing about my good friend Bob Engel. Who is the straight transportation supervisor. He accomplished what few people are able to do. He ran from Cleveland to Cincinnati for a couple charities. One affecting the police force in Colrain Township. And I asked him how many hours or how many, yeah, how many hours did he run every day? And he said up to fourteen hours a day he ran on it to get to Cincinnati. It took him eight days, but it was a worthy cause for these two charities. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a, a, a positive thing for the district because he is our supervisor. If you want to give to the charities, I don't know if I can say this, but one is the Parkinson Disease Fund. And also the K nine unit in Colrain Township. You can go to either Bob, Bob's page. Which is Bob Epic Erie to Ohio Adventure. Sounds like a movie. Or you can go to my Facebook page, Elekjo Yashimura. The second thing I want to talk about is the masks. I saw something on, from the showcase and this kid, this young man was testing masks. And I thought that was just outstanding. So all I can say about that is just to keep your masks on. And please respect those who wear their masks, but you know, we want to get over this whole thing. The last thing I want to talk about is a nonpartisan. Plea to all eligible voters in the district. Please exercise your constitutional right to vote whether by mail or in person. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Pam?
Well, first of all, I want to tell Lindsay, she's doing an awesome job answering the questions and, and keeping the. Our webpage and our Facebook page and everything up and going. And I just want to tell her thank you because it, it's really nice. It's nice that people can ask questions and she's able to get answers back. And the tracker on our website and everything else. So great job, Lindsay. The only other thing, I also want to congratulate Colrain and Northwest both on their postseason play in football. And good luck to Northwest. I believe they're playing another game. So good luck to them. I believe Colrain's men's soccer is still in tournament. So wishing them the best of luck as well. It's a crazy year, you know, to try to figure out what to do, but great job to the coaching staff and the athletic departments and everybody that's pulled together. So that these kids got the opportunity to play these games on all sports, not just football or not just soccer. So great job to everybody. And then the masks. The other key thing with the mask is if you're going to wear the mask, just wear it right. Wear it over your nose. These people that walk around and it's down here like this is kind of pointless. So just wear the mask, suck it up and let's all get back to. As normal as we can. The sooner everybody does what they're supposed to, the better off. It, it is going to be interesting over the holidays because of course we all want to see family and friends. We just, we just need to be smart and. And try to stay, I hope everybody stays healthy. Thank you.
Thanks Pam. Matt?
I'd just like to thank the staff and everyone for everything they're doing, both remote and in-person for our students of the district. And also wish the best of luck for Corinne Men's Soccer is playing Mason right now. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Jim?
I just kind of want to echo what the rest of them have already said. Especially wearing your masks and wear them properly. You know, social distance and wash your hands. You know, that's a big thing. Just. You know, just keep everybody healthy and, and then from there. Back to normal. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Jim. I just want to, everybody's touched on pretty much everything. I just want to thank all the, all of our staff. Those at the AO as well. I know that life probably feels like you've had a hand stuck in your sock and turned inside out. You're doing things very differently and maybe working even remotely and you lose the camaraderie, I guess, maybe of being around everybody. You know, we, we just appreciate the flexibility and the. The bobbing and weaving and just trying to keep up with all the needs that you guys have to have each day. I, I think what Bob Engel did was really amazing. I, I can't even imagine. I can see running from Cleveland for sure. But I, I, you know, you try to think, it's not like you're on seventy-one and driving from Cleveland. Like you're having to find all these little backroads and run. Like I can't even imagine what his body feels like running that many miles. Joe, how many miles was it total?
I don't know, but his feet hurt.
I, I bet his feet do hurt along with his hips and everything else.
It's a long way. I, I think it's over three hundred and seventy miles. I'm not sure.
It's nice that he did it.
But I did give him a press, I, I got him some Dr. Scholz for a present when he got back.
I bet.
Because he's hurting.
It, it's nice to see something like that during a time where we have a lot of political unrest and division. And you see somebody doing something for something better than, than Jim just themselves. So with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second. And that vote passes five to zero. Thank you, everybody for joining us for our meeting. We'll see you next month for our November meeting. Be safe, wear your masks.